Was it ninety-four? It looks like maybe. I can't see. Maybe ninety-five, sixty.
Karen, we have Jeff's cell number. Jeff's cell number.
It's longitude.
Maybe I forgot about it.
A. Ninety-six, ninety-nine. C. Let's try to get that here small six. Maybe ninety-six.
Oh, goodie.
That would be fifty-six feet of building space.
How long she on the downhill?
She can't tell you unless she doesn't know, doesn't actually know for sure. Actually, justice to all. Well, she, when she was running, she told me, um, continue to be employed and you'll have to be deported. She says she stays in the village and tries to watch the, uh, things when she can. I don't have no problem. Felt you got any whiskey?
He wants to gargle.
She's trying to get him, I guess. I guess she's trying to get Jeff.
It's not twenty-four. It's the twenty percent.
He's what?
He's here.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is that right? So Cindy didn't?
I said, well, Cindy was there, I said, where is he?
Oh, yes.
I said, no, I'm not. I said, what do you mean? Say it more, yeah, what do you?
She'd be great.
I love Cindy.
There he is.
Need to move these meetings back to six oh five.
No harm. Not bad.
Mr. Dykes, you ready?
Yes, sir.
At this time, we will call the February twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen Walton County zoning board a just meeting to order. If you would, please stand as we have the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Dixon.
Dear Emily, Father, we come to you right now and we ask that you will be with our nation and with our leaders, that you will be with our state and our county and that you, Father, would provide the guidance and the direction that is necessary for government to govern well. We pray, Father God, as we gather together tonight, that what we say and do will be in the best interests of our community, the one that we love so well and the one that we call home. I pray, Father, that as we, uh, as we look at our proceedings tonight, we'll be mindful of the fact that, that we gather in safety and security and that comes at a high price. And so we thank you, Father God, that we live in this nation and that we have this opportunity to exercise our rights as citizens. We pray, Father God, that you bless this time and all those who are here. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
United States of America, two thirds of our vote, which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Do appreciate all the board members being here tonight. It's always good to have almost a full board. We appreciate our attorney, Mr. Dykes. I understand you read a little bit on the weather things. We're making an effort to be here with special thanks to Karen. She's a little bit tired. We try to get air as soon as we can and all the planning staff, we do appreciate. Are there any announcements that needs to be made at this time?
Uh, the only announcement I, I would, uh, give the board is that, uh, Judge Lewis is gonna have a, uh, oral argument hearing on the, one of the appeals, the sanctuary by the sea matter. You may recall, some of you weren't on the board at the time, but it was a denial of a, uh, clearing permit that was requested. So, uh, they appealed that decision where, uh, the board, uh, determined not to, to issue the permit, the clearing permit. And, uh, that hearing will be on, uh, February twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen. All the other appeals are, are still pending. We have no hearing dates, uh, still waiting on Judge Lewis.
When was that denied? That was a long time ago.
Yeah, it was probably close to eight months ago.
Yeah, something like that.
Was that the one that was on the water?
Yes, sir.
And the neighbor, and the neighbor filed the appeal?
No, this one was, uh, were sanctuary by the sea, wanted to, uh...
Clear out some underbrush.
They wanted to clear underbrush because of the zoning area that they're in. They're in a coastal dune lake zone area. They have to do it a certain way. They had brought in a, uh, environmentalist to kind of set forth the guidelines and at the time, the board upheld, staff's decision not to grant.
Well, at least he's making progress with hearing our cases.
Yeah, slowly but surely.
Good deal. Everyone here tonight that planned to speak before this board, if you would, please stand and raise your right hand to swear that at this point you give will be the truth.
All right, we'll do this en masse. Do y'all swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I hope you got it. All right, thank you.
May be seated, first item that continues tonight is attorney, Clarence. Who's here tonight to represent this? Come before the board, state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name's Ted Turner and my last name is spelled T-U-R-N-E-R. Can you all hear me? I don't know if this microphone's here. Okay, thank you. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank, thank you all for being here tonight and giving me the opportunity to speak with you regarding some of my concerns. I'd like to be, uh, very transparent and let you know I'm not a developer. I'm not a builder. Uh, all I'm here is trying to build my home. That's all I'm looking for this evening. Uh, and I have never asked for a variance before. I have never been in front of a board before, so please bear with me if I may, if I'm unable to, um, address all your concerns as you would, you would hope. I'd like to stress at this time that I am fully aware that this variance is for my lot and my lot only and I know it pertains only to me, but there have been similar situations in which there have been, um, variances granted in the past. I know that does not impact me here today, but I just would like for you to be aware of that. I'm gonna make this very simple. I'm a man of very few words. What happened is I went out to buy a lot. When I bought the lot, I met with the realtor. The realtor showed me the guidelines of the setbacks as were described in the architectural guidelines of the HOA. I then hired a surveyor. The surveyor came back and his setback guidelines were identical to the document that was given to me or shown to me by the realtor. I then bought the lot and when I bought the lot, the guidelines that were given to me at closing were identical to the guidelines I had received from the realtor and from the, um, survey. Right? So what I did is I hired an architect and I turned in my plan. My plan did not require any variances at all. I, in fact, when I spoke with the, um, architect, I told him I did not want any variances. I did not want to be in this room tonight. I did not want to cause any issues or problems. I said, make sure my plan does not require any variances. And when I turned it in, it did not. Then, when I turned it in, the HOA asked me if I would flip the house because they did not want a garage on Village Boulevard. I happily apply, uh, I happily agreed with that request and I flipped it. When I flipped it, it did require that I needed a variance in the back from a fifteen-foot setback to seven and a half. I was just trying to make everyone happy. While I was preparing to come to the county and ask for that one variance, I received notification that the county and the HOA had found a past, and bear with me here, I'm sure I'm using the wrong terminology. The past commu-, uh, uh, older site plan, original development order, maybe that's a better term, which showed the typical footback, footprint of future homes. Um, with that, it basically changed direction for me. It actually took all the information that I had given, that I described earlier before, and took my side setback from seven and a half to twenty feet. So, I'm sorry.
You're talking about your front setback?
No, my side setback. I'm sorry, did I not answer? I'm, it's my side. The, the front is twenty feet and the plan does reflect a twenty-foot setback.
Do what now?
I'm sorry, the, the, the front does require a twenty-foot setback and the plan reflects a twenty-foot setback on the front. They changed the side of from seven and a half feet to twenty feet.
Who changed it?
Well, I worked with the HOA and they told me the county did, basically. Because of this old order that had been found or discovered or... I don't, I just received the communication. And that's when they told me I needed to go to the county because they would no longer provide any homeowner with the setbacks over lots, that the county would be responsible for giving that information.
Go ahead. We, we, we'll talk to the county here in a minute. Go ahead.
So, anyway, so...
Jeff, you have any?
Well, I'll bring it up after you're finished.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, in the communication that I received from the HOA, it told me that if I had any, um, concerns with the new setbacks of the changing the side from the seven and a half to twenty feet, that I would need to come to the county and ask for a variance. So that's really why I'm here tonight. I'm asking for two variances. One, because I wanted to work with the homeowner, or the homeowners association and flip my house and, and per their request. And that required the first variance and the second variance is really is that the game changed on me almost towards the end of, of my race. And so I'm here to try to work with everyone to see if I can do that variance as well.
I've never heard of a twenty-foot side setback, so what I would like to do, if that's okay? Jeff, go ahead. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm under the impression that you can only have one of the frontages facing, uh, a street.
That's like a county address.
Be labeled as twen-, a twenty-foot setback. Is that not correct?
In this particular development, the original applicant that designed this subdivision and got it approved by the county had some irregular shaped lots, uh, based on their development plan.
Hang on a minute. If you would, sit, sit down and let us talk with the county. Cause I think that's where the twenty-foot is gonna come in. So just sit there in the front.
Okay, so, so will I be able to comment on any of the comments that are made? Thank you, sir.
You're gonna be, we'll call you back, just...
Thank you very much.
Just sit down right there if you would. Let's hear from the county.
Yes, sir. In the package, there is a copy of the original, uh, overall site plan for this development that shows building footprints identified on each lot.
Is that is C dash four?
The very last page in the package, I believe.
C dash four.
That looks like it, yes, sir. Uh, and this variance applicant has a corner lot that has two front yards. Cause that's the way that this developer intended that and that's the way the county approved it. And on the large size plan, we can scale this and it matches standard county setbacks.
Now do what now?
We can scale this building footprint and it matches standard county setbacks. Um, and these were the setbacks that we believe were originally approved with the development order for this subdivision.
That you believe was the, was the...
The original intent as approved by the board of county commissioners.
Okay, help us understand where his twenty-foot side is.
It's not a side setback. Uh, it is actually another front yard. Cause he's got a corner lot.
Okay, help me with this. So, show us on, on Villas Boulevard. Is that the front?
There's a, I can't quite read that.
Yes, it is Villas Boulevard. I mean, they're, they're both, they're both fronts.
But you're not gonna count both of those as fronts?
Yes, sir.
The land development code in Walton County says you can only count one of the street.
Does not say that. It says what standard county setbacks are. Um, and it's very common to have a corner lot, uh, that has two front yards. And we believe that's the way this was approved.
So, you're saying that he's got a front on, on Villas Boulevard and he has a front that's on, uh, Heights Drive, Heidi Heights Drive, right?
I, I think that's the name of the street, yes, sir.
Okay. Which one is his house? Which one is he calling his front? On the plans, which one? Which...
I think he's calling the Heidi Heights Drive his front yard.
Is that what you're calling your front yard?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And y'all calling both of those fronts and they only has one side?
We're looking at the building footprint that was approved on the plan.
That's...
This, this lot actually has five sides. Or five angle, not side setbacks, but five different dimensions from the building footprint.
Is rear facing a six or is it facing two?
Casey's, uh, should be six.
So you're gonna call that the rear?
I think that's what we're doing.
So it's kind of makes sense that Heidi Heights would be the front?
Yeah.
The rear is opposite the corner. Uh, the two adjacent angles are side setbacks and then the two adjacent to the streets are front.
Yeah, that's in the page preceding the development and site plan. And it's having labeled the rear and the side.
Y'all wanna go ahead and come up and state, say how you feel about this? Mr. Carpenter, I tell you, I don't, I've, my memory's not as good as it used to be, but I've never have... We ran across this before, but one or the other is designated as a front. I never heard that you had two streets that would be treated as front setbacks.
That's the way this was approved.
Who approved this?
Go ahead and mention that.
Who?
That's not in the code either.
Let's let her get up there.
Okay.
Yeah, basically, I think because of these irregular lots, um, the county had been looking at them differently in the past when this, um, development site plan was discovered in the development order file. It's when the county decided that, you know, that you would have to go with the approved site plan in the development order.
Explain to me, when did y'all run across this and when did y'all change the direction of the county interpretation?
I believe it was somewhere around a year ago. I could be off by a few months. Um, you've had one other come for you with a, a similar, not exact, but a similar situation.
Was it a rear setback?
Yeah.
Okay, I remember.
Yeah, it was a regular, in a regularly shaped lot as well.
Yeah, and they had a rear. They wanted, yeah, fifteen going on two sides on the rear.
Yes.
Okay, so go ahead.
So the only difference here is, um, that they are asking for the, uh, reject, well, the reduction from the, the front setback and that appears to be where, um, I'll let the homeowners association speak for that or the, um, they seem to have some concerns about that.
So the front setback could be interpreted as a side setback and he's asking for a twelve and a half foot variance to leave seven and a half foot that would meet code.
Yes.
And the rear setback is, uh, he's asking from a fifteen to, he's asking for a seven and a half so that would leave him seven and a half.
Yes.
In the rear.
Yes.
Go ahead, Vivian. It's not, go ahead.
Well, I mean, um, I think it's, it's, it's up to the applicant to establish their hardship. I think they've given you, uh, the, the property owner has given you, you know, the background to the best of his ability. Uh, you know, there, this is a, this is a different animal. This, uh, uh, this whole subdivision, it has irregularly shaped lots. Um, it has tiny lots. It, um...
When was it planted?
That was, um, I'm thinking somewhere around the height of the, the market, somewhere around two thousand and four, two thousand and five.
There's a two thousand and three signature on it.
Just for information.
Site plan, so that it was probably, um, shortly after that.
And how much, um, how many houses have been built in that subdivision?
Um, there are, there are quite a few. There are quite a few built out.
Any other questions for Vivian?
I was just gonna ask you, if, if he had not flipped and, and complied with a request from the HOA, he would be in complete, uh, compliance with, with the code, right?
Well, I think on the one setback, I think we'll let them...
We're gonna let them come up and speak in a minute.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, the problem, well, apparently the problem came when they were asked to flip per the, um, DRB, um, with the homeowners. Uh, and that created the one setback problem. Uh, but the other one is because of the, um, development plan, site plan.
But it is also, you, you just started implementing that like a year ago or so? Is what you, when you started doing it towards the, with the foot plan?
It was probably around a year ago when, um, the planning staff discovered the, the development plan.
A year, eighteen months ago. And this came to my attention and I'm the one that made this determination, uh, because of a question about how to properly apply the setbacks in this particular development. And if you look at the lots on Heidi Drive, the actual front is oriented to the lesser street, Heidi Drive. But if you look along the boulevard that runs the entire length of the property, they're showing a twenty-foot setback off of the boulevard right away, the entire length of the development. So it's clear that the developer intended there to be an additional setback off of the main boulevard spine road through this development.
Is there an additional easement along that as a reason he stayed back? I mean, is there...
No, he just was concerned about the appearance of where the houses would be constructed in the development, what it would look like when it was finished.
Mac, are all the existing homes in there in that twenty-foot setback? All of them?
I don't know. I don't have information about that.
We may have other questions for you, Vivian?
Okay.
May I?
Not yet.
Okay.
Uh, there's some gentlemen back on the back wall back there. Do y'all wanna come up and speak? You appear to have something to say.
Yeah, uh, my name's Ronald Velker, uh, professional surveyor and mapper. I've done a lot of work in this subdivision before. I'm the surveyor on this and the plat clearly...
You're a surveyor on this for the...
This particular lot, yes, sir.
Okay.
The plat, uh, the plat clearly shows in the general notes, item number eight, minimum building setbacks are as follows, front twenty, side seven and a half, rear fifteen. Now, historically speaking, unless I've got the wrong information, that if, when you have a lot like this, the lot that had, the side that has a street that has the less length is your front and the side that has the longest length is a side. Now, in some cases, they've gone as far as to say instead of a seven and a half foot setback, it's a ten-foot setback. But historically, in this subdivision, uh, the layout, the side setbacks that we have shown on, or, excuse me, the setbacks that we have shown on here are historically what we've done on other lots and been approved on other lots.
In that subdivision?
Yes, sir.
That would be on, uh, Villas Boulevard?
Yes, sir.
What was you reading from? You just read...
From the plat, page two of, of the plat. If you, if you want me, I can give, show it to you.
Do we have a copy of that in our binder?
The same note appears on the original site plan. And those are standard county setbacks. And one of the reasons that that appears there is they did not ask for any deviation from standard county setbacks to reduce those. It's not uncommon to see a larger setback proposed by a developer in excess of what the county would require. We have a whole bunch of subdivisions that have thirty-foot, uh, front setbacks.
I think the question is what they call in front? And, and I understand your position. Do you have anything else? Anybody has any questions?
I was, I was looking up Florida statute seven twenty point three oh three five, which references that a lot should only have one front setback. And I'm wondering if this document that y'all are referring to that shows two twenty-foot setbacks would over, I guess supersede that state law?
That's something we...
I don't know, but this is what was approved by the board of county commissioners. When approved by staff.
I, I don't have any unless you guys have questions for me.
Any questions for the, thank you, sir. Anyone else from the audience since, come on up? State your name for the record.
Thank you, Phil. My name is Michael Galvin. I'm the president of the homeowners association at the Village of Blue Mountain Beach. And I think some of the questions I ask are very good. Basically, uh, we have had six homes built with, on corner lots with appropriate setbacks, twenty feet and twenty feet on the front, twenty feet on the side in order us to maintain green space so that our community could have quiet enjoyment and our hundred and forty-four owners could enjoy a community that was well laid out by a developer and approved by a commission. And this is what we expect to continue. We feel that this variance will have a tremendously negative impact on our green space. Secondly, we have seven more lots that have the same identical situation. Twenty feet on the front, twenty feet on the Village Boulevard side so that we can maintain our green space. So, uh, as we look tonight, we're looking at a single, a home, but we have seven other people in the queue who wanna build homes who are saying, well, and we know the other people built their homes, but we don't want to. Uh, the master association considered all the development yet to be done. We've looked at it very carefully and we feel that we, we have an obligation to protect our community, to protect the green space and all our investments that we've made in order to maintain a quality community. The, uh, master association is uniquely authorized by the state of Florida to maintain the development of our community. We consider our job very responsibly and we're asking the county to please support the master association, the laws of Florida and to not grant this variance, which is against our development and is against what we have envisioned for our development. We have another homeowners who can speak to us who, A, we've had houses built in two thousand and four with the correct setbacks. We have another homeowners who can speak to us, who, A, we've had houses built in two thousand four with the correct setbacks. How things go, we've had many termoils, changes of personnel. So, perhaps information goes not perfectly communicated. However, we've always communicated that on these corner lots, it's twenty and twenty. What I'd like to ask you to do is to indulge us to allow some other homeowners who bought prior to this owner, who built to the twenty foot by twenty foot setbacks and understood it, as does our resident architect, that we encourage people to contact, who also knows that the setbacks are twenty feet on the two, on the two streets. So, at this time, if you would allow some other people to speak, I'll answer questions.
I have a question for you. Are you aware of any of the corner lot owners who have built a home using a seven and a half foot setback along Village Boulevard?
No, I do not know any.
I got a quick question for you, would you prefer that he flipped the layout back to the original?
We do not allow driveways onto Village Boulevard. That is a boulevard laid out by the developer to provide a green space to our eye. That's a very narrow street that someone's trying to put, so we do not allow driveways out on the Village Boulevard.
That's, that's why you asked him to flip it.
We didn't ask him to flip it, we just simply stated, we don't allow driveways on Village Boulevard. The driveway is clearly shown in his plat as on the cross, on the intersecting street. So, we simply stated that he should follow what is, is out there.
It's a twelve foot wide street, so you wouldn't even be able to back into it out of a driveway anyways, it sounds.
Not on Village Boulevard, you could not, it's a very narrow street. We have children, this is a community with children, we're trying to have a life there. And we're trying to protect the community to allow our community to develop as originally intended. Lots happened since the boom, but we have been challenged to try and do the right thing for all the owners.
Thank you.
We have some other homeowners.
Sure, who's next? State your name for the record, please.
My name is Matthew Myers, M-Y-E-R-S. And I am a full-time resident. My wife and I have been in our home for approximately five years. And we would be most negatively affected by the rear setback, which you're referring to, the fifteen reduced to seven and a half feet. We do have a back patio in our yard.
Do you live on number six?
Yes, we're in lot six.
Okay.
And our concern is, as Mike has stated, that the green space would be reduced in such a way that we would normally have public walking spaces in between the homes to allow this green space. And with a seven and a half foot reduction, I believe that would be negatively affecting.
What's the size of your lot, what size is it?
Well, it's referred to as a medium sized lot in the Village of Blue Mountain. I, I don't have the exact footage.
Okay. What's the distance from your house to your property line?
From the rear setback?
Yes.
Well, our, our back patio, it, it appeared that it would be approximately ten feet from the proposed new property.
The, the, the property line or the structure?
Uh, the, well, their, their new proposed structure, I haven't actually gone out there and, and measured it, just eyeballing it, seeing a seven and a half foot reduction is what concerns my wife and myself.
Okay, thank you for coming, anyone else? State your name for the record.
Yes, sir, my name is Linda Ebling, E-B as in Bravo, L-I-N-G. I'm a resident of the Village of Blue Mountain Beach, and I own a corner lot. I just, it's a G-five on the corner of Nancy Taylor Lane and Village Boulevard. And started developing a plan late twenty fifteen. And I heard an architect, in fact, it was Jeff Margaretton, and I, I told him, showed him a plan. I said, the plan kinda suits, you know, this lot. And he said, well, you have a twenty foot setback on, on Village and a twenty foot setback on Nancy Taylor. And I said, oh, my plan actually suited more to have less of a setback on Village. So, I said, you know, go to the county, check, you know, make sure, 'cause I, I really would like to do this, have a little less of a setback on Village if possible. He said, okay, I'll check, and he, he knew what our covenant said with the twenty and twenty. And he said he checked, and he came back and he said, Linda, the planning committee wouldn't, wouldn't approve that. He said, just, let's just work with, this is what we have. I said, okay, let's go for it. It pushed the house a little bit further, so I had a smaller backyard and, but I, I had to comply by the twenty on Village and the twenty on Nancy Taylor, so.
So, you oppose to the variance?
Yes, pardon, sir?
You are opposed to the variance?
I'm opposed to the variance, yes, sir.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it, anyone else?
My name is Herb Bobo, B-O-B-O. My wife and I moved to this neighborhood, moved in our house in October. We live on Nancy Taylor. And the reason we chose this neighborhood over other neighborhoods in this area in Blue Mountain was because of the green space, because there's setbacks and there's opportunity to have a yard. There's opportunity for neighbors to interact with each other, and the houses aren't right next to each other. So, our opposition is, in general, we, we don't want to see something happen here that gets repeated seven times down the road. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, anyone else? Uh, sure.
Just to bring, uh, bring to the board's attention, this gentleman's lot on Nancy Taylor in Village does have a seven and a half foot side setback on Village. So, his house is seven and a half feet off of, uh...
I don't have a house on the...
Village Bull, uh, Village Boulevard? Yeah, but your front, you also have a furniture on the, on Village. Okay, lot six, block F, if you look at the, if you look at the house that's on that lot, that particular lot, that house is, got, does have seven and a half feet off the side, off of Village.
We're not, you know, I think the testimony here tonight, and it's pretty well in record that it's supposed to be twenty twenty. If someone else has built within that, we appreciate you bringing it up. But that's a code enforcement violation, they have to come and ask later, but we're not gonna, but we do appreciate it. Come up and say.
Thank you for listening. The only thing I would like to bring to the, we have had quite a few letters. We have a number of homeowners who are not here tonight who oppose this, they had the flu. We have sent in quite a few, I, I think of...
We've fixed in to address that.
Okay, and the other thing is that we do have houses that were built back in two thousand five, six, seven, the original houses met that setback standard.
What do you know of any house that does not meet your setbacks?
There were some, when we were unable to get the county to work with us on certain issues back in the day when, let's say there was lots of confusion, a few houses, two houses were put in that violated the code, and we could not get the county to enforce the code of that day. Has to do with things were happening during the, during, during a period of time of great confusion.
During the boom?
And right after, during the downturn of the bust and the boom and, 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 uh, we had a couple of builders come in and just said, well, this is what we're doing, we don't care what anybody says. And we could not undo, the county would not make them take out their foundations, so that's, life happens. We, we live with that, and, but we are, but our goal is to maintain our community to the best of our abilities.
So, there's only two that you know of?
Yep, well, there's one that's a big violator, a second one that's a small violator, and that's the only two houses. The other ones are all, seven of them are compliant, and six, or seven are to be built, but to be compliant. Six have been built that are compliant, and they trace back throughout the development of the community.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the audience? Karen, do you have a record, the numbers of opposition presented? You want, do you know how many, about seven of them? Looks like about one, two, three, four, five. About nine in opposition. That's on the fence, yes. Anything else from staff? Jeff, do you want any questions with staff?
I'm, I'm fine.
Mr. Turner, you wanna readdress?
Yes. I'd just like to point out, the county has stated that they discovered this plat or this building development order twelve to eighteen months ago. I would like to state, to state that I bought my lot two years ago. And when I bought my lot, the covenants in the survey said seven and a half setback. And I know Michael, the president of the HOA spoke and said that he's been very clear about a twenty twenty. I will tell you that I have not received that information until August of this year. I have a copy of the covenants, which was given to me at closing, which shows that it says a seven and a half setback on the sides. I was never told that there was a twenty twenty setback anytime from anyone.
Where did you get your covenants from that shows it's seven and a half?
I got it at closing, it's required that I get it at closing.
I mean, who provided it?
My attorney, or the closing, the closing people, the closing attorney, staff, I, whoever did my closing.
Do you have a copy of it?
I do.
Just take your time, we got all the time in the world, just take your time. You're kinda in a delicate situation. Could you?
May I approach?
Pass it around, please.
And, and while that's being passed around, Michael said that it was, it was, it was not the request that I changed the, the garage. I would like to point out to the county that prior to purchasing, I sent an email to the CAM asking if I could build a garage on Village Boulevard. Like I said before, I did not wanna cause any issues, I didn't wanna cause any problems. So, I sent them an email and asked, was there any issue with me building a garage on Village Boulevard, or Heidi Heights, before I hired an architect and spent all this money? I wanted to make sure I was following the rules. They sent an email back to me and basically repeated what was in the covenants, 'cause there was no description in the covenants. They said as long as the, something along the lines that the garage had to be attached and had to be of a similar architectural style.
You have copies of those?
I do, I do, yes, sir.
How large is your house?
My house is approximately fourteen, I mean, thirty-four hundred square feet, sir.
Thirty-four hundred square feet.
May I approach?
Just please.
And, and, and I, and I have been approached by the HOA, because if you'll see clearly, we requested if a garage and a driveway could be built on Village Boulevard, or Heidi Heights. The response that came back that said that you could build a garage, the garage had to be of similar design and attached. The HOA has come back and basically said, well, we never told you that you could put a driveway there. And so, I, I, once again, I just, I don't wanna get into the frustration, but you know, I clearly asked if I could build a garage and a driveway. They came back and said you could build a garage. They didn't have it in their covenants. I, in good faith, as a good, as a good community citizen, went out before I even started the process to make sure I had clarification. And then they came back and said, well, no, you can't do this because we never told you. So, basically, we didn't answer your question.
What's in your covenants?
I'm sorry?
What's in the covenants? Is it in the covenants that you cannot have?
It is not, they just changed the covenants when they sent this every, in August of this year is when they sent out and said your, your setbacks have changed, and now we've changed the covenants, and they put all of those changes in.
Do you have a copy of the covenants before the change, and do you have a copy of the covenants after the change?
I have a copy.
Oh, that's the new covenants.
No, that's, that was...
That's it, I mean, I don't know.
That was given to him at closing from his power.
You know, the plat says it was dated in two thousand, and those are all public record, are they not? Mr. Turner?
I'm sorry?
Are you aware that Ed Roland is not a licensed architect in the state of Florida?
I did not know that, sir.
That, that could be part of your problem.
Does he present a self-advisory?
It does not say that on these documents, but Mr. Turner continues to refer to him as an architect, and that could be part of the problem.
These are emails that you received from the Village of Blue Mountain?
Those are emails that I received from the CAM, who the HOA has hired to represent and manage the property. May I approach?
Uh, just hang on a minute.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Can we get copies of these? We're like, we're just passing them around. Go ahead.
Okay, here's the copy of one I received.
Now, those are covenants before?
That was what was given to me.
That was covenants, and then they changed them?
They, in, in, in August of this year, we received a notification that they had changed the covenants. And in those, that covenants, they did say you could not put a driveway on Village Boulevard, there were a variety of things. So, I contacted the HOA and asked them how they made changes without getting community votes. I was always under the impression that in order to change the variances or covenants in a community that you require a certain percentage of votes. And they told me that it was not a, it was not a change, but it was a clarification.
And this is what you was given at closing? What is this? This is the first one. Just step aside a minute if you would.
Thank you, sir.
The president of the association, would you come up here, please? Are you familiar with the emails that Nikki Linsack, the email, Mr. Turner? Are you, are you familiar with the emails that Nikki Linsack emailed that it was okay to build on Village?
I heard that he was given that advice, however, the organization, the master association, never received those emails. We were, we were on, I was not aware of them.
Who does Nikki Linsack?
Was, the Architect's Review Committee, which has Architect's Review guidelines, was trying to be help, helpful. However, all that is advisory, and we encouraged him to...
Now, wait a minute, just hang on a minute. Who is Nikki Linsack?
Oh, she, I'm sorry, I missed that. She is the CAM, that is, the, the manager that we have hired to do all the reporting and to provide homeowners...
She works for the homeowners association?
Yes.
And she provided information on emails stating that it was okay for him to build his house facing Village Boulevard?
I, we have never approved it, she might have said that, I did not know that, I haven't seen that.
You've never been told that?
No, not, not in an email, I've never seen that. I have been told that by Mr. Turner at other meetings, that, yes.
Let's, let's get a copy of that, give the homeowners association. Yeah. Let's just get six copies, seven copies of it, give it. What about the, the... What about the, the covenants? When he purchased his house, he was given a set of covenants, and you changed them in August?
You cannot change covenants in the state of Florida without a process. The covenants were, have not been changed, they have now been changed appropriately registered in state of Florida. What he's referring to is.
What do you mean by that?
What do I mean by that?
What do you mean that now they've been changed so they're appro?
Yes, but they're not, they do, they clarify, they have, the covenants guide the property. And state, we have only now gone through the process to change them. What he is referring to.
When, when, when did you change them?
I think we completed that about a week ago, two weeks.
So they're just now recorded?
They've just now, they have been recorded by our attorney, Brandon Burr.
And they were not recorded prior to that?
We had one set of covenants that we went by.
That you, that was not recorded?
I'm sorry?
Were they recorded?
Yes, the, the original covenants of the property when it was developed.
And that's what he just gave us?
I do not know what he gave you. I think he's referring to the Architect's Review Guidelines. I haven't seen what he's giving.
Which is in your covenants?
The Architect's Review Guidelines are based upon our covenants, but they are more explicit. They go into porches and eaves and all the things necessary to build a house.
Were that in place at the time he bought the lot, or was it changed also?
Yes, and our, that information, the Architect's View Guidelines can be changed by, per our covenants.
I'm asking you, I'm asking you the document that he, he has delivered to us.
I haven't seen it. When I look at it.
Have they been changed since he's purchased his lot?
Certainly, yes, two or three times.
Okay.
Would really like to point out to you, though, that we do have houses that have been built all along. Linda Evelyn's house was built prior to his purchase. Using our architect. He was aware of the guidelines.
Who is your architect?
Margarettan, Jeff Margarettan.
Mr. Dykes. When a document is provided to a person at closing, and the title insurance company provides those documents to a buyer, and the covenants that he was given provided to a buyer, there is some legality there that, that should we not look upon? I mean, he was given in good faith, he bought it, he was given in good faith. He received emails from the CMA, CAM, who, you know, Nikki Lonzac. Yes, you can do this, and yes, here's, and then all of a sudden, they changed things. He, I mean, I mean, surely there's, we've got to give that some consideration.
Well, yeah, I think it can go towards, you know, the applicant's reasonableness and reliance on that. I mean, now, does it, you know, change what covenants are in place or not in place?
But whenever, whenever you're given bad information by the, the people that is running the homeowners association, they have to take some credit, credit for the information that is being provided that is not correct. And it's, and it's in the email, and it's in their, in their covenant that was given to him.
I think that's definitely something the, the board can consider when, when making its decision, yes.
What, did I, did we see a copy of the covenants that you were provided at closing, Mr. Turner?
Yeah, we just gave them to you.
It says revised January 2017, that one?
Yes.
So what, when did you close on the lot?
I'm sorry, I closed in 2016. That was the one that was given to me on 2017. I apologize, but it's, it's identical. There was no changes from what I.
Because that document says that, that the street setback, the front slash street setback is 20 feet. So I don't think that it's giving contradictory information. It says the sides, side setback seven and a half, but the, the front slash street setback is 20 feet, and then the plat shows 20 feet, and that's public record. And then there's an email here from prior to you closing that says that the county requires a 20-foot setback on both street sides, and your partner said this would be a problem before we close. So y'all.
But I, but I think that says if your house is her, is set diagonal, and we were not planning on making our house diagonal. If you, if you read that, I miss.
Jeff? Have you read that?
Yeah, that's what I'm.
I'd like, we.
I'd like one other comment.
Sure.
Is that our covenants clearly state that there's no approval of any house until the Master Association meets and board meets. Nikki may have said, this is what she thinks. He never presented that to our official board for a vote. In a clear written statement, we give all, the Master Association Board gives people clear letters stating this is what we want to do, in a formal letter. We do not rely on emails for that purpose. So while there may be some confusion stated because of, again, surrounding the arguments, we have clearly outlined what our goals are for our community. We are following the intent of the developer, and the fact that there may be some misinformation should not override what our requirements are.
But I also think it's your responsibility that the information that is provided is, is correct.
Absolutely.
And I also think you need to give consideration when the information is provided that it's not correct, that you put the person in what type of position.
And we have addressed that. We, we are addressing it by clarifying our Architect's Review Guidelines, so it's very explicit, there can be no misunderstanding. The fact that Ms. Lonzac had given her opinion, that's all it was, her opinion.
But she also represented the association.
She is not, she represents an association, but our covenants clearly state that the Master Association Board is the only board that can give him an official answer. And that had, we had not done that.
What is her title?
She's, she's called Certified Manager. They call them a CAM in the state of Florida, I don't.
She has that CAM that you.
She does have a CAM. She was going by what her understanding was. However, our community, we have a history.
Can he pick up the phone and call you, though? Does he have to go through her?
Anybody can call me.
I mean, is, I mean.
Yes, he, he had the right to call me. He can call anybody. But we would not answer those questions until we had a formal board meeting.
So you have a lady that's running the organization, is giving information that is incorrect, and then y'all tell him at the end of the day, it's incorrect, you can't do this?
You may have picked up one mistake she might have made, but our goal is to give accurate information, so we have worked very hard to ensure that our ARC guidelines are very clear.
And one other thing. It is your testimony that the regulations that need to be recorded is just now recorded for your homeowners association?
The covenants.
The covenants.
Is my testimony. The Architect's View Guidelines can be changed per our covenants at any time with approval of the board.
All that's.
And we have gone through many iterations to make them clearer. Every time we see something that's not real clear, we try and edit it, make it word, and we republish it.
Okay, thank you.
And we have the right to change them until we approve the bill.
Thank you very much. Mr. Turner, anything else you want to add?
Just, just one more thing. You know, I, I really just want to emphasize that, that I, in good faith, have, have tried to work with the HOA. And I also have a letter here that was, it's actually from Michael, who actually said that he would support, and the HOA would support the setback of the rear from fifteen and a half to seven, seven and a half. He, like I said, when he approached me and asked me to switch the garage, he said, whatever variance you need, we will support you on. And I told him I would need the seven and a half rear from fifteen to seven and a half, and he actually wrote a letter saying that he would not support me on the 20 foot, 20 foot to seven and a half side setback, but I have a letter where he said he would support it. And this was dated October 16th, 2017, after the revisions.
Let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way you can redesign your house to meet the, the guidelines that they all will be happy with? Because it's going to be, you know, troubling for you if, should it pass? I mean, can you redesign your house?
I cannot. I've talked to my architect, and for me to follow the guidelines provided, the new guidelines that were discovered in August, or told to me in August, I would have to take out 1,400 square feet out of my home.
Well, you, your drawing doesn't even show it pushed over against the, the setback adjacent to the other lot opposite Village Boulevard.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I need to. The, okay, the original plan, yes.
Well, the plan that I'm looking at shows it slammed up against the seven and a half foot setback on the Village Boulevard, leaving about a five-foot gap between the setback on the, on the inside side setback.
That, that's correct, I mean, that's, I'm, I'm, I don't know which, which one you're looking at, sir, I'm sorry.
There's a fairly large gap here. There's also a large gap between the garage and the house. So I'm curious why the house couldn't be moved closer to the garage, and the garage moved closer to the side setback.
Because where the garage is, that's not the side that's being impacted. It's the, the, the side, it's the other side of the home that's being impacted, unless I'm misunderstanding your question.
Well, you have a 20-foot setback from Village Boulevard, and yet the house is slammed up to a seven and a half foot setback on Village Boulevard, and you have a huge gap on the opposite side. So before you say you can't meet the setback requirements, you might try moving the house closer to the seven and a half foot setback opposite Village Boulevard?
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes, sir.
I think what he's saying is the, this may be a good time to continue this meeting and see if you can readjust your house, and you might be better off to ask for a, a setback in the front, you know, with your porch maybe, and then the back, you, you could, you could cut off a piece on the corner. And I think you need to do like the gentleman, Mr. Jeff, said, see if you can move the house up. And I think, would you be willing for us to continue this to, to the next meeting and give you the opportunity?
Absolutely, sir, I appreciate the opportunity.
I think that'd be in your best interest. Motion to continue?
Motion to continue.
Second?
Second.
Okay, right?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone need a break? Do you need a break?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break?
Is that the two inches that I'm looking at there? Two and the 2.3 that are sticking out there? Is that, is that what he's talking about, there and there?
Yeah, I already mentioned it. What happened to it?
Yeah, I think that's right. That's 19, 1909.
It's time, wasn't it?
And then seven foot, three.
We call the meeting back to order. It is my understanding, according to Mr. Dykes, we need to enter into evidence, applicant one and applicant two of the previous various requests.
Yeah, I believe we have them marked as applicant A and B.
Applicant A and B.
The emails are applicants exhibit A, and then the covenants we've entered in as applicants exhibit B.
Let's look it up. Next item on the agenda. Who's here to represent it?
Jeremy Mel Irons, I'm the builder for Mr. and Mrs. Kevin Mayer. They have a, a home on Orange Avenue. It's 1,815, 1,857 square foot house with a detached garage in the front. My, we needed to be 20 foot off the front setback and seven and a half foot off the side setback, which it says rear here, but it's actually, it should say side. I was out of town, and I told the concrete guy, we got, we got plenty of room, there's no need for surveys here. You could, they could have slid it to eight feet, they could have slid it to 21 feet. I said, there's no, and of course, I get back, we get the survey done, and he's missed it by like an inch, a half inch. So he's actually seven, seven three, should have been seven five. He's 19, 1911, or 1909.
1910.
1910, and he should have been at 20. So we've got a two-inch variance of, but now, the, the problem is, and I, because it's, it's my fault, I was doing it as a point when she asked me, do you need two? And it was, it was, most of it's 7.5, not 7.6. So there could be a little bit more that needed, shouldn't be three inches is really what we're, we're needing.
You asking for a three inch on the front?
I'm asking for 20 on the front, so if it's 1910, I need two inches.
You asking for a three inch there?
On the, yes, on the front, I need two inches to get to 20.
You, you asking for, you want a two inch there, or you want a three inch there?
Well, three inch will get both sides fine. Three inches will get me to 7.6 on the side and 20 foot, one inches on the front.
You have 19.10.
I got 19.10 inches. See, that was the issue, and you mean, a point two is different than two inches. So when we were talking about it, I was thinking I needed 0.2 inches, but it was wrote as an inch. So I need three inches or 0.2 inches.
The slab is, you already have.
It's, it's done, the garage is sitting there, so I mean, I'm not.
This is a garage?
Yes, it's a detached garage, it's a 24 by 24 garage.
And if we don't do this, you got to.
You got to tear the whole, 40 grand down the tube for two inches.
You'd make money for it, wouldn't you?
No, not me, I would be, but out of my, out of my pocket.
Yeah, the insurance, don't you?
Yeah, but I don't, I mean, like I said, I've, I've probably got 20 calls on it, and they all laugh. They said, you, well, you really got to do a variance for two inches. I said, well, that's.
You sure get nervous when you start talking about your money.
Just to make it clear, though, you're looking for two inches on the front.
Three.
And three on the back, on the rear.
Well, the, the, the front can be two, I believe, 1910 will get me to 20, 20 feet to sides where I need the three.
Right. Because it's six, six, it's seven and a half.
Seven three, I need it to be 7.6, and I was looking at 7.5, and I.
I think this is worded right, two inches on the front.
Okay, the, your, two's going to cover, right?
On the front, but not the side. I need three on the side.
All right, anything else?
No, no, that's.
This is honest mistake?
Yes, yes, this, I mean, yeah, there, there was no reason for, I mean, there's no issue that, there was no, if, if it was close, I would have got it surveyed, and my survey would have set me up pins, but, and I do that all the time, but we had plenty of room. It was just a, just an actual, actual mistake.
Anybody against it? Anybody for it? Staff has any comment?
Now, we'd just like to enter the staff report into evidence. Staff has no objections.
It's getting late, isn't it, Vivian? Motion to close the public discussion. Second?
Second.
Okay, right? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
As presented?
Second.
Which is a two inch on the front variance and a three inch on the.
It's the side.
The side.
Three inch on the side.
Well, he's calling it rear.
That needs to be.
The sliding collar, that one's the top of it.
Their request is correct, we're right about that.
Side. Discussion?
I just want to ask staff, if you read your finding on page one, and then read it again on page three, there, there's complete. Staff finding, staff recommendations.
We have a motion. We close it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion, how, Charlie, how you vote?
I vote aye, send it.
Aye. Phil? Phil? You receive your variance.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, being honest. Mr. Burgess? You're the last one. Karen's sick, sleepy, she needs to get out of here. You want to make it quick?
I'll try to debrief.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Dean Burgess, I'm with Emerald Coast Associates. I'm the engineer of record on the Eastern Lake Townhomes project and the variance that is before you tonight. This is a 0.84 acre village mixed use property owned by Estina and Calvin Wells. I just wanted to point out briefly that VMU Village Mixed Use is the, the highest land use category as far as intensity and density within Walton. as far as intensity and density within Walton County. This property has never sought a land use change where it went from some other designation to village mixed-use. It's always been a village mixed-use property and presumably the development rights that go along with that. I also wanted to be clear, this variance that we're asking for is with regards to preservation, but we meet all of the preservation requirements on site as far as the amount of preservation that's required. There's been some confusion on that in one of the letters that we have, I received and is in your packet. And I can get into that letter in a minute and explain it further. But 9,200 square feet of preservation is required. We have 9,340 square feet of preservation provided on site.
9,200 is required. You have 94?
9,340. So we've got a little more than what's required. The subject of the variance is more the configuration of the preservation, specifically the width in which the preservation is provided. The Land Development Code has a provision in it that states that 50% of the required preservation shall be accomplished within 20-foot widths. So half of the preservation needs to be in a 20-foot width. And basically, that, the reason that we're seeking a variance is due to the geometry of the property. It's a very narrow piece of property. It's 95 feet in width and long. There's a combination of parameters that when combined, as far as restrictions on the property when they're combined, it produces the hardship that we're demonstrating tonight. The first of which, and what I've done is, hopefully y'all can read this, is taking sections of the Land Development Code that apply to this property, and I think, hopefully, you'll see that whenever all of those are applied to the property, it becomes nearly impossible to develop it and maintain all of the provisions of the code. The first was a, that development on parcels of two acres, measuring two acres or more in areas of characterized by sand pine scrub, longleaf, sand pine, sandhill, or zeric oak, which are zeric oak scrub community. 50% of the natural scrub vegetation on the site shall be retained. Goes on to explain more about it. The key in that paragraph was two acres or more. Well, our property's .84 acres, you may think. Doesn't apply to us. Well, sometime after the Land Development Code was established roughly around 2010, 2009, they changed the scenic corridor provisions where in part, section 13, 2.0, D.2, states in part, references to parcel size in section 4.06.02 do not apply to this section. Preservation requirements apply to all parcels on 30A. So everything on 30A is subject to preservation. And that makes sense. I understand the objective was 30A is a scenic corridor. They wanted to see more preservation on it. They didn't want to have two-acre parcels exempted and have no preservation on them. It's understandable and reasonable. However, keep in mind, the original two-acre provision, more than likely on smaller parcels, as you apply setbacks and buffers to a smaller parcel, in percentage of that parcel, it becomes more and more, a larger and larger percentage of the parcel. A big 10-acre tract, you take the perimeter, it's a small percentage. As you get smaller, take the perimeter, it's a larger percentage. So the restrictions, as you get on a smaller piece of property, become tighter and tighter. When they got rid of, when they negated the two-acre exemption on 30A, they didn't relax any other restrictions. You just had to make it work. Next provision, and this is the subject of the variance, is 4.6.2.7 of the Land Development Code. At least one half of the native preservation that is preserved pursuant to paragraph two, three, and four above, which are previous sections of the code, shall be preserved in compact configuration with an overall 20-foot width. That is the portion of that section of the code that I'm asking to seek a variance from. However, it goes on to state in that same section of the code, the location of this vegetation shall provide separation between development projects, which we have accomplished. So we're only seeking a variance from a portion of a paragraph of the code. The second half of that, of that paragraph, we need, and I'll demonstrate in a minute how we need it. Next is just the standard landscape provisions, and I pointed that out because the landscape buffers are required on this property and between adjacent residential uses, the buffers will be at least 10 feet in width. And you don't have an opportunity to provide a 20-foot buffer over here and, you know, reduce the buffer elsewhere. You have to have a 10-foot buffer here and a 10-foot buffer on each of the sides that are residential. So that's another restriction that I'll show how it applies to this property. Sidewalks are required on both seats of, sides of residential streets. We exercised our opportunity to buy out one of those sides of the sidewalks. And again, you'll see how the sidewalks impact the summation of all the, how these impact the width of our property. Lastly, and I think most importantly, is a section out of the comprehensive plan. Section 1.11.3.5, which in part states, it speaks to where natural community vegetation is to be located. And in the case of our vegetation, it states it shall be located to minimize disruption of the contiguous to maximize the extent, to the maximum extent possible. The highest priority for selecting natural vegetation, community vegetation to be preserved on a proposed development site shall be with respect to buffering. And this is our proposed site, and what I've done is illustrated in green where our preservation is located. And you can see, we've acted in accordance with that highest priority of maintaining the preservation in the buffers. Preservation is in all of our 10-foot perimeter buffers and along the 30A buffer. What I've illustrated in yellow is the 10-foot setback. There's a provision that requires, or does not allow you to count preservation within 10 feet of building structures. And what I've illustrated is what I honestly believe we can maintain. And it's basically a three-foot offset from the buildings. We still aren't claiming that vegetation. What's in, what's in the yellow on this board is just for illustration purposes. I think we can get a 15-foot continuous strip of preservation. Of course, we're still not going to count this in our calculations, but I just wanted, want the board to realize, in reality, I think our builder can maintain a 15-foot strip of preservation on this side of the property. So we meet the required amount of preservation. And the property measures 95 feet, so I did a little dimensional analysis. The 10-foot landscape buffers constitute 20 feet of the property. 10 feet on each side. The access that we're required to have for fire trucks and two-way traffic is 24 feet. That's our road showing here in gray, our access driveway. Preservation setback from structures that we just talked about, which is 10 feet off of the structure, is another 10. Sidewalks, we bought out one side, so we only have one five-foot sidewalk. For a total of 59 feet, you subtract 59 feet from the 95-foot width of the property, we're left with 36 feet for buildings and some setback distance from the road. So it really pinches our buildings. We made, we made it work, and we, our architect did a good job of designing the structures here. But in order to get a garage, and we do have two covered garages with the development, but much less than 36 feet, you really get pinched. If we had to do another, you know, 10-foot of preservation, we'd be down to a 26-foot wide house. And that just certainly isn't the market on 30A.
Basically, what you asking for, you asking for 20, you asking for variance within the 20-foot, so you asking for 10-foot variance?
We could, I could tell you right now, the green area, yes, 100%, not just 50%, 100% of our preservation is in a 10-foot strip. So if you wanted to, if we wanted to look at it that way, we can reduce this 20-foot requirement down to 10 feet, and we'd meet it. We'd double the requirement of 50% of our preservation.
And you could live with that.
I could absolutely live with that. Yes, sir.
Well, we'll talk to county here in a minute.
Can you rephrase that?
Well, the way the code reads is 50% of your preservation has to be maintained in a 20-foot wide strip.
Right.
We could do it either way. I could, I could say 100% of our preservation can be maintained in a minimum 10-foot strip.
Right.
Right. Or if you said 50% has to be maintained in a 10-foot strip, obviously, we meet that hands down.
Go ahead.
All right.
Are you done?
I'm done, yes, sir, unless the board has any questions for me.
Let's listen to the county. Let's see what the county has to say tonight.
All right, thank you.
What you think, Vivian?
What?
What do you think?
What do I think? Well, we have had our environmental planner review for the chapter four guidelines, and he's made his comments in, within the staff report and did not find, did not have any objections or anything to, that would prevent the granting of a variance. This is, it depends, you're trying to, you know, get the development that you want in that space and, you know, max out the, what you can put there. This would, this would accomplish that. You can certainly grant a variance should you consider it to be a hardship based on the evidence, the narrowness of the lot and the difficulty to, to develop that with the, that 20-foot, 20-foot width requirement for 50% of the preservation area.
Just to be clear, though, that we could say that the variance is a 10-foot, the variance of the 20-foot required? That's good, Matt?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone from the audience like to speak?
Oh, I did have a couple of phone calls. I forget. Then I did, this is a difficult one to explain to the person who wants to call because it is complicated and you try and bring it down to terms that somebody can understand. I think I did get that across to a couple of the people. They, their concern was mostly that there not be any less preservation required.
Right. But you don't have any written opposition on that stuff?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Pardon? Are there two? I thought there was with those others. Okay. State your name for the record.
My name is Bob Razika, and I am the vice president of the Homeowners Association for the Villas of Seagrove Beach, which is immediately west of the proposed development. Before I make my, and let me say this, that I'm the vice president. I have been in touch with our president of our association. He is out of the country, but he has expressed his thoughts with me and that I want to share with you as well, and also our secretary treasurer of our association. I also have a number of members of our, of our, of our development here with me. Before I proceed, I want to make, I want to make a clarification or ask for a clarification from the architect. From your description, what I understand you to say, there are two, there are two buffer provisions, right? Of 20-foot each, is that correct? For a total of 40-foot before, not in your development now, but the requirement is a total of 40 feet for that 95-foot width. Is that right?
No, there's the, I'm sorry, there's.
That's, that's what we don't understand.
There's two 10-foot landscape buffers that are required.
Well, not in, not in what you drew up, but what the, what is required before the variance. So what is the requirement for the buffers on either side before the variance is considered?
Why, Mr. Carpenter, answer?
We're looking at 10 feet on the side, on each side. The request has nothing to do with the buffer size. It has everything to do with the width of required preservation wherever it is on the site. It happens to be available in the buffer so it can count towards the land use, landscape buffer. It can also be counted as preservation. What they're asking for is a variance from the provision in the code that requires whatever you claim as preservation, wherever it is on the site, for 50% of that to be in a minimum 20-foot width.
Forgive me, because I'm not knowledgeable with this, but again, let's just take between us and, you know, the western side. What is the requirement for the buffer?
For the land use buffer, it is 10 feet. The fact that they have.
Not what he's asking, but that's what the county requires, is that.
No, he's not asking to change that. That's a separate requirement of the code, to have a landscape, land use buffer between developments. He's meeting that requirement. Now, there's another requirement because of the natural vegetative community on the site.
Okay.
The code requires preservation of 50% of that. Now, you can pick which 50% you want to preserve based on your building plan. The county doesn't prescribe that. The code does say that at least half of the preservation that you're going to claim to retain has to be in a minimum 20-foot width. It doesn't, it doesn't say it has to be on the side of the development.
You guys deal with this all the time, so really forgive me here, okay? But he's asking for a 20%, 20-foot reduction.
No, sir. He's asking to count his preservation in areas not exceeding 10 feet, at least half of that.
Maybe to simplify it for me, what is, what is going to be our experience in the change in the development that he's talking about? Of what it would be if he didn't change, if he didn't give the variance, how far would that development be from where we are?
Same distance. Has nothing to do with the distance from the development. Has nothing to do with the distance between developments.
What is he saying?
You have to cut, wait, you need to come out and state your name for the record. And you need to speak slowly and clearly for our secretary.
Hi, good evening. My name is Andre Dominick, A-N-D-R-E, Dominick, D-O-M-I-N-I-C-K. I want to thank you for your time this evening. My wife and I have owned the Villas at Seagrove since 2004. She is a resident of Florida. I am still a resident of Ohio where I am on a planning and zoning commission in Euclid, Ohio, where we just approved a Amazon distribution center. What we are asking here this evening is what is the exact variance that he is asking for?
Why, Mr. Carpenter, address that?
Just to clarify and put this in context, it has nothing to do with the separation of the buildings.
I understand that. I'm asking, what is the exact easement or the exact variance that he is requesting this evening?
He's requesting a variance to the minimum width of one-half of the required preservation.
Okay. And it's interesting to note that over the past years, the homeowner association has come to the county and asked for, for our community to put additional parking spaces in, and additional place for our dumpster. We were told that because that is a conservation easement in the back part of the property, the borders on the state porch, that we were denied that. So we were told that, and.
Can they ask for a variance on that?
No, sir, and I'm very familiar with that. Yes, sir, that is required preservation, and you can't reduce it in size because the developer already did that at the development stage. That has to, that has to be maintained.
And so I understand that. So what you're saying is you want to skinny down the width that he is asking for into 10-foot segments as opposed to one contiguous 20-foot segment?
Essentially. It's not a reduction of the amount of preservation, it's the shape.
It's the shape.
It's the shape of 50% of it.
And so we are opposed to you modifying the width due to the fact that that is a conservation easement behind there. There are bears, beach mouse, raccoons, et cetera, that inhabit that area back there. If you look at the current configuration. Have you tried to pull out of the Seanest Village or Villas at Seagrove at a peak traffic time? I don't have to say anything more. And then we're also hearing that they're looking at cutting into a sidewalk area? That's a busy corner down there. A lot of people on bikes, a lot of people live there full-time, and if you look at this, you're trying to gain maximum density, and you're trying to put seven units crammed into a tight space here. Why not say five units? Okay? Why not say three units that are nicer in size as opposed to four townhomes that are just stacked? And if you look at that, why would, and if you're talking about, you know, maintaining the scrub, you know, not destroying it, not bulldozing it, did you notice that they've already bulldozed a driveway there? They've already tore up a good section of the land? Was that approved?
Yes, sir, it was. It was for geotech purposes to investigate the site.
But it would also be interesting, why wouldn't you want to line up that driveway to the driveway across the street so it's perpendicular for traffic patterns?
There is guidelines set forth by the county. Mr. Carpenter is responsible, I'm sure those guidelines are her too, and I can assure you that he has done that. The developer has the right to develop to the, to the code, and that's what they're doing.
I understand that. But I would just want you to consider all aspects of conserving a conservation easement that is 20 feet in length in a contiguous space, and I would ask for your consideration on denial of the request or scale back the project. Thank you.
We appreciate you coming up. Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make one other comment. Again, I apologize for not understanding the details of that because I'm not knowledgeable, but I have been asked by the President of our association, as well as the Secretary Treasurer of our association, and from, speaking for myself, that we ask that the variance be denied.
Thank you for coming, we appreciate it. Anyone else?
Just for point of clarification, there is no conservation easement on this site.
We understand. Come out and state your name for the record.
Steven, what was to answer that question later?
Pardon me?
There is no conservation easement on the subject site.
Yes, sir.
Okay. My name is John Leclerc, I live in Seanest Village, which is right next door to the property in question here. And really, I really just have a question. I don't know what impact the driveway that they're proposing to put in has on their variance, but if you, if you're not familiar with that area, but that driveway is actually going to come right next door to our exit point of our subdivision, and we have to actually ease out almost to the point of the road to even see, because that turn is a sharp turn, and we got people coming down that road, it's supposed to be 25, they're 45 every time coming down, down through there. But my question is, is I guess if they, where they are asked to flip that driveway to the other side, because we're going to block them, I'm telling you, we're going to come out so far on our road just trying to get out, the people that may be trying to exit that property, they're going to be blocked view because we're going to be in front of them. They're going to be looking to the left, and they're not going to see it because our car is going to be there trying to exit that property, our property. So my question is, is does, if they, where they are asked to flip that driveway that you guys have, is that going to impact the variance that they're, they're requesting at the time?
You want to answer his question?
Sure. If, if the driveway were to be mirrored and flipped, and I've, I've spoken to some folks in Seanest, Charlie Ryan called me, and it would not affect this, this variance. We would still need to request the variance.
But are you going to, I think your question is, are they going to take and flip the driveway? Is that something that?
I've, I've taken a look at the driveway geometry, and there's two, there's two reasons behind it, and actually, I've got an aerial that probably depicts it a little better. This is the Seanest driveway, this is our proposed driveway, and this is Villas at Seagrove driveway. If we flipped or mirrored our, our plan, our driveway becomes a lot closer to.
Right.
Villas at Seanest, or Villas at Seagrove, and basically, the spacing of the driveways were, were done for a reason. They're uniformly spaced between the three driveways, which is the best we can do.
Right.
For the property.
Did that answer your question?
It, it does, but I guess what I'm hearing, and you're not, right now, you don't plan to flip that driveway?
We do not plan to.
Do not plan to do that. Because it is going to cause a safety problem there, I'm telling you. It's going to happen, because this is our exit point here, and that road going east is, is very sharp, and you, there are people around that turn in no time, and they're on us, so you, we have to be very careful, but if we're going to pull out far enough, it's going to block the view of these people trying to get out as well. So we may have an issue, that's my concern.
You're going to have to call the Sheriff Department, tell them there weren't traffic.
Yes, sir.
They got plenty of money, plenty of equipment. Thank you for coming. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Todd Hooper, and my wife and I are also residents of Seanest, and I understand it's a challenging lot, but I just have the same comment as John there. When you have 18-wheelers bearing down on you when you're trying to get out of that driveway, it's, it's rough. So if they could flip that, it'd be better, but that is a safety concern.
It'd be nice if the county commissioners would work with the state of Florida to put a road kind of in between 38 and 98 to get some of that traffic off of 38. There's some streets in there, D to the record, it'd be nice if they would open them up. I don't understand they don't, but I think you need to voice that to your county commissioners and your state representative. We appreciate y'all coming.
Thank you.
Okay, one more. We need to.
My name is Louise Mackey. We own the unit, a unit in Building A of Villas at Seagrove, which will be on the immediate west side of this. I'm not real smart about these things, but I know that for some reason zoning was given to say that there should be 20 feet. So I say there should be 20 feet because I'd like to see that upheld. I'm not sure that they have so much of a hardship issue with zoning as they have a plan that may be too ambitious for what that piece of land can support, and I'd just like for that to be considered, and I would like for that to be considered.
We appreciate your comment. Thank you very much. Anything else? Mr. Burgess, see you have the final thing.
Just like to, to briefly respond. Again, I think there's still some confusion that the amount of preservation that is required, we are meeting and actually exceeding. It's just the, the how it's configured, we're asking for a variance from requiring the majority of it to be in 20 feet to something less than 20 feet, 10 feet would be fine. Yes, sir.
Dean, if this were cut up into individual lots, how many units of density would be allowed if they were single-family homes?
This would allow 9.6, so it would be nine units.
Nine units.
And I wanted to point that out, somebody said that we're maxing out density. We're not, we're at 70% of our allowable density.
Reduction in density.
Yes, we're at 70%.
Would the 20-foot contiguous preservation be, buffer be required if they were single-family homes?
Yes, it would.
It would still be required to subdivide it?
Regardless what type of development you do.
I noticed in the aerial that Seanest Village no longer has the vegetation in their rear setbacks that are adjacent to this property?
Actually, the, the aerial, I wanted to point that out. Seanest Village, we were the engineer of record on that, has a 10-foot preservation strip along their western property line that would made up with this 10-foot preservation strip. And again, the, the section of the code that asks that you abut existing preservation areas in order to expand those, I wanted to illustrate that we, we do that on every side of the development. Against Seanest, it becomes 20 feet along this portion of the property, we, we have preservation that abuts it, and our preservation is oriented to abut to Villas at Seagrove here, their preservation areas here, abuts to ours. So it, it builds upon existing preservation.
Dean, is there, is there anything that dictates where the 50% at 20 feet goes on a piece of property? Do they address that at all?
No, as, as long as it is preservation of the proper materials, property, proper vegetation.
I think they've done an outstanding job trying to work what they had to work with. Any other questions? Anything else? Motion to close the public discussion?
So moved.
Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
You make a motion to approve a variance of 10-foot under 20-foot?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Okay. I think they did as good a job as they can trying to surround it with a complete border, and then if they were to, the lot's incredibly narrow, and it would be difficult to get it in there with 20-foot wide and still have it, even if they did do the 20-foot wide, the, they're still allowed 10-foot on the other side that would be adjoining the majority of the people that are upset about it. They wouldn't change that buffer, they'd only be changing like the, the other side where they had some additional land anyway. I don't see a lot of other choices there.
Phil?
I'm done.
Jeff?
I, I do think it's worth mentioning that they do have 100% of their preservation area met, and that they have not maxed out the available density on the property. I think it's a compatible density considering the height of the homes in Seanest Village, and then the size of the condominiums to the west of that property, so I think that, that the variance board is, is here to kind of look at these special circumstances, and the code does not address properties like this that are narrower than the, than the language would anticipate, so.
Very well said.
Mr. Dixon?
Very good.
Mr. Dixon, how you vote?
Vote to approve.
Phil?
Approve.
Jeff?
Approve.
Aye.
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 Mr. Burgess, he finally won one.
Thank you, sir.
He did a better job this time.
I failed to mention that I try not to come up with this board.
We rewarded you for it. Has nothing to do with your brother being on the board now, you understand that?
That makes me want to come even less.
If he'd have been here, he would have had to recuse himself.
Y'all know he's, he's evidently real sick.
Is that what?
With the flu.
With the flu.
All with the flu.
Yeah, a lot of people.
Have you guys lost people in your office for the last couple of?
Half the office was gone.
Yeah, can't get anything done.
On the minutes? I'm a little confused on the minutes of the last meeting. It's the one with favor. Help me remember.
They can't claim the preservation within 10 feet.
The site plan, that's where they wanted the Villas of White Cliff, and it was proposed to be the Villas of White Cliff Plan of 1993. And they really didn't ask for any variances on their, on their site plan. They didn't describe the, the variances, they just want us to grant it to what it was on the plan, so therefore, the minutes should reflect the site plan of Villas of White Cliff. That's my understanding of it. It reflects the, where is it at?
It's four.
Yeah, which page is it on?
Space four, and.
There it is.
It's reference in the, in the motion Exhibit A, AS-1, and that was the survey with the site plan, but I thought the site plan that they mentioned was the site plan of the White Cliff subdivision, because their variance request was for us to adopt the White Cliff subdivision.
I think you specifically said AS1. I can go back and, and watch the video if you want to hold off on the presentation.
No, because we, I'm fixing to sign it, so.
If I put one in there, then that's all the same, but AS1.
But I don't guess it really matters. Okay. Motion to approve, the minutes, seconds.
Second.
All the favor, motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Pardon me?
That was.
Very good. Good meeting. What y'all think? Look at this guy.